We're live. Welcome to the Lovitzville Town Council Candidates Forum. Thank you all for being here. The goal tonight will be to give the voters a good introduction of each of the candidates and provide some discussion of the challenges facing the town and the goals for next council. And while we're live streaming this tonight, we hope, we hope it's working. It's not something we've done before. We've done lots of forums, but not one like this. So this will be recorded and we can use this as a voter resource over the next several weeks. Whenever the elections are held, if they're, so we'll see where that happens there. So we're going to start off with a casual introductions. Everybody go to take about two minutes and introduce yourselves, what your goals are, your experience, those type of things. We'll do introductions. We have a couple of questions from the newsroom staff. And then we'll be collecting hopefully questions from people on the Facebook comments. So that's how the evening is going to go. We're going to start off in alphabetical order for the opening comments. And then each question will rotate who goes first for the next one. So we'll just go around the big circle. And with that, Mr. Mr. Don Lap, you're up. Introduce yourself in two minutes.
Well, thank you. Thank you loud now for organizing this forum, the other candidates for being here. And most importantly, our residents for joining us here this evening. I grew up on my family's farm here in Lovitzville and have seen a lot of changes to my hometown over the last few decades as it has grown from a few shops and homes to a bustling community in danger of outgrowing its status as a small town. Tiffany and I love raising our family here and enjoy helping to run Summer on the Green, Mayfest, Caplessville, and many other events that we believe are important to help build our community and bring it together. And my professional career has spanned 17 years focusing on rural economic policy, infrastructure programs for small towns across America, just like Lovitzville. As a senior policy advisor to Congress, I developed and provided oversight on the policies helping rural America today. I continue to work daily on behalf of agribusinesses which support our rural communities across the country. Continuing public service as an officer in the US Navy Reserve, I helped provide strategic counsel to Navy leadership and apply the Navy's core values of honor, courage, and commitment to every area of life. On the town council, I have an unparalleled record of success on reducing taxes, supporting our local businesses, and finding resources for our critical infrastructure. Growing up in Lovitzville and bringing a wealth of policy, communication, leadership experience to the town council has helped me provide unprecedented transparency, accountability, and efficiency to our town government. In just two years, I've effectively worked with our staff and elected leaders and state agencies to cut tax rates three times, get our crumbling streets paved, implement campaign finance reform, seek grant funds for events, projects, and studies, promote our businesses, provide training sessions, fight wasteful spending, reject aggressive residential development, find no-cost pedestrian safety solutions, and prevent increases in water rates. My priorities are dictated by the most acute needs of our families in Lovitzville, and I know that we can make critical infrastructure improvements without raising taxes. Affordable water, safe access to schools and parks, and low taxes matter. Those will be my focus as your representative on the council. By putting our community first, listening to all sides, and critically reviewing all ideas, my experience in leadership can help put Lovitzville on a sustainable path. Thanks again for being here.
Thank you, sir. Dave Earl, you're up next.
Thank you. Thank you loud now for hosting this event. Thank you for all the candidates here. And for you at home watching, my name's David Earl. For those of you who don't know me, my parents moved Sterling in 1966. Except for a couple of years abroad, I've been in Loudoun County for 52 years. I moved just outside of Lovitzville, 2003. Met my wife with my trucking company hauling water in 2006. We then got married 2008. Now I reside here at Lakeview Village subdivision. Currently, I am a board member and we're working on the infrastructure here. And I'd like to thank the town council, the mayor, and the staff for helping put that together. A lot of time, a lot of money, and we're in the final throes getting that done. Also bring to the table 25 years of working in the construction industry, a lot of which is road construction, some industrial construction, equipment operating, and trucking. That experience is gonna be able to bring to the table here on getting things done right the first time and hopefully saving money through the different budgets these projects are going through. We got a lot of big decisions to make. With what's going on now with the virus, there are, we don't know where the chips have fallen yet, but that's going to be one of our priorities right off the bat is recouping the economy and making sure everybody here is good. And then we'll go forward with the projects ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Cheryl Frye.
Hi, everybody. My name is Cheryl Frye. I'd like to thank Loudon now, the other candidates, and of course, everybody at home and online who are watching us. I am a professional proposal and grant writer. I have lived in town for a handful of years and have had children that have grown up in this area. And now that they're older, I have more time to devote instead of just volunteering for Mayfest and Oktoberfest and Summer on the Green as I have in years past. I'd like to put my proposal and grant writing background to good use here. I think I have a lot to offer as far as that goes. I've worked with state, local, and federal governments as far as writing those grants and proposals for the past 20 years. As far as other things that I qualify for, I have been a coach. I have worked with all kinds of members of the community. And I really think that a nonpartisan, open voice is really important. I have not taken any endorsements. I'm really sincere about being a nonpartisan voice and a voice for the community and to be someone that listens to the concerns of our populace here in town. And like David was saying, some of our first things that we're going to have to do is going to be making sure our economy is in top shape after this virus passes and making sure our people have what they need and are taken care of. And that has a lot to do with the town council listening and seeing what everybody needs and making sure everybody is doing well as we go forward. Some of my concerns and priorities are sidewalks. I think that's a wonderful thing that we all need. I live in the historic part of town and I watch families and children ride bikes and scooters and not have a safe place to do that on. Thank you so much.
Okay, next up is Joy. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joy Prick. I'm a 12-year resident of Lovitzville. I moved here, like many of you, from an area of south of Lovitzville and Gainesville where things were just exploding and getting way too crowded. Found Lovitzville to be home and have literally fallen in love with Lovitzville. I have two daughters, one in middle school and one in high school. And this is the only town or area that they've ever known, and of course, they love it too. I'm a high school math certified teacher in the state of Virginia, and that's something that I do bring to the table with my math background. Also, with the county of Loudoun, working with them, part of my job, I have to work collaboratively with other teachers. So the model that Loudoun County uses is CLTs, collaborative learning teams. So as my job, I have to collaborate with other teachers, and I've been doing that for a long time. And that's something that I bring to the table that I can collaborate with other people and look forward to collaborating with the town council. Also, being a Loudoun County teacher, I hope to bridge the gap between where Lovitzville is and where the middle school and high school is, which is outside of town. I feel like we could have a little bit more involvement between the town and where the middle school and high school is with sports and activities and things that go on with the schools, and I hope to bring that to the town. I'm also a member of the Newtown Meadows Architectural Review Committee. Being that I live in Newtown Meadows, it's great to have a representation north of town. There's no one on the town council that lives north of town, either in Kingsridge or Newtown Meadows. I've been a computer operator for the Lovitzville Dolphins for the past couple of years. I was also a treasurer for the Lovitzville Elementary School a few years ago when my kids were in elementary school. And I've never been in politics before, but I'm determined to be an honest servant to the town at this time. And I look forward to serving all of you soon.
Thank you. Next up is Buck Smith.
Hello, everyone. Excuse me. Hello, everyone. And thank you as well to Loudon now for having us today. We appreciate the opportunity. My name is Buchanan Smith. Most people call me Buck Smith. Pretty sure you're going to find both on the ballot, so you'll know what to vote for. We live here in Lovitzville for about 12, maybe 13 years now. My wife and I moved here and were up to four kids last time I count. Moving here from Leesburg, it's actually a funny story. It was the events that brought me here. It was the small-town feel. I came up here to visit a friend during Oktoberfest, and we absolutely fell in love with Lovitzville. So much so, we actually attended kindergarten orientation before we even had our house bought. That's how much we knew we wanted to be here in this small-town environment. And that's what I hope to accomplish, excuse me, continue to accomplish, is maintaining our small-town environment while we manage our growth and be responsible fiscally. A little bit about myself, I may have been on the town council now for 14 months. Been the new guy on the board and learning as I go, but having a great time. I've always enjoyed a life of service. It's the way I've been raised. I started out in the Marine Corps a long, long time ago. I've also volunteered for various organizations and currently I'm working as a coach in Little League if we ever get the season going. And I also volunteer for the Ryan Bartel Foundation. Two things I support, my family and I enjoy attending church down in a community church in Ashburn. And we're looking forward to a good election here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then last but not least, Ken Tanam.
Thanks, Patrick, and thanks Loudon now for hosting this forum. My name is Ken Tanabam. I come from a small town in New Jersey where I grew up, a town very similar to Lovitzville. I served six years in the New Jersey Army National Guard, and I have a 20 years-plus experience in retail management and customer service. And then a subsequent 10 years in system administration and development operations. And some of the commonalities that I found in those careers is that I've had a need to find effective and efficient solutions to a myriad of different problems. Had to balance between focusing on the individual while finding solutions that didn't overlook the general populace. I had to balance, find a balance between needs and wants, and I'm hoping that I could bring those skills to the town. I have no political background or political aspirations. I'm just looking to help the town and offer my services on the town council.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll go into some questions. I guess if I rotate through, who gets to answer first? We'll do one-minute answers. I'll sort of wave at you when you get close and I can mute you, so don't make me do that. We'll just all get through it together. So the first question, we're going to start with Dave. And so good. Dave and then Cheryl, so same order. So the first question is, with real estate assessments having continued to increase, the town's tax rate has dropped a little bit. Utility rates have held steady for several years. How do you view the fiscal fiscal management of the current town council and what would you do differently?
Right now, I wouldn't do anything differently. What we need to do is, is once the chips start falling from this virus, we'll have a better look as to what needs to be cleaned up, what our community needs, what our, what our businesses need, get the economy going again. And what, what is going to take to resolve that is yet to be seen because we haven't seen the end of this yet. So to answer your question, I don't see any changes with that policy yet. I don't see making any hard decisions on changing anything just yet until this virus is over with and we have better ideas to what we're looking at. That's, that's all I got.
Okay, Cheryl.
I'm in strong agreement with you, David. I agree. Until we know exactly what the landscape is that we're dealing with, we should maintain the status as we are. However, I do see that there's some room for some infrastructure improvement. We don't have any redundancy in the water system right now, and that's concerning. If anything were to happen to our current water tower, that would be problematic for the whole town because we're all on that. And so that's, that's an issue. But I think that there's ways to find funding for that. And it needs just to be on the horizon of something to look for. But again, I agree with Mr. Earl on that until the COVID situation is resolved and we know exactly what we're dealing with, things should stay at status quo.
Okay, Joy.
I hate to say that I'm going to tag on, but I think we're all on the same page on this one. The only thing I do want to add on to this is as far as budget in general, I think that, you know, so far, the town council has done a great job with it, but I think there's always room for improvement to look at it in a little more details and so that we can possibly save money at some point. But again, we don't know what's going to happen in the coming months. So I think it's important that we wait and get some more details before we make any future decisions.
Buck?
Thank you, sir. I think it's important to look at our water and sewer rates and understand that our hookup fees are going to be going away as we continue to develop and infill and the building goes away. That's something to be addressed in near future. I'm happy with the current tax equalization rate. I do have concerns about if home values were to drop and how that will affect the taxes that we pay. And I think that deserves continued attention and continued debate on the merits of an equalized tax rate. Yeah, thank you.
Ken?
Thanks, Patrick. I don't have enough details to say that if elected to town office off the bat, I would make any changes. And I also don't want to say that, that we should just maintain status quo from the get-go because while we need to be cautious with this virus, the town has to go on. There's people, days go by and they're still dealing with their bills and their expenses. I will say that, that I think that we need to like, like Buck was saying, we need to look at where we stand, what the future might bring, and put together some projections and go from there. Otherwise, I've not been impacted by tax rates or, or water rates myself. I don't feel that they're, that they're out of whack in any way, but that's just me. And how it affects me isn't, isn't really just what's important. It's how it's affecting the rest of the town. So I think that we just need to look at where we stand and project, look at different projections and where we can go from here.
Okay, very good. The second question goes to start with Cheryl, and I think you actually addressed it.
Did you want me to jump in here?
Oh, you're right. Go, Mike.
Hey, I appreciate the question. You know, I'm proud to have successfully advocated to reduce property taxes for three straight years. I've also successfully worked to equalize the tax rate for the upcoming year, and it's important that we ensure property tax bills don't rise just because the housing market might shift year over year. We hear the term fiscally responsible, which means essentially pay your bills, which is not much of a statement since the Commonwealth of Virginia dictates that we balance our budget. What we need to be is fiscally conservative, which is to only ask our residents for the minimum funds necessary to operate services, be prudent with the hard-earned money that they give to us to manage. The town has to live within its means, and more importantly, our town government must live within the means of our residents. We can't make taxes an arbitrary number set just because we have a list of ideas that we came up with. After prioritizing what the town needs rather than what the government officials want, we must judiciously protect every penny from fault, waste, and abuse. That includes opposing gilded offices, especially while streets remain unsafe and our water system remains deficient of the reserve pressure needed for fire suppression at our hydrants. I can promise you I will continue fighting for lower taxes and leveraging our resources from outside of the town to complete the core infrastructure projects and municipal services we need while rejecting wasteful expenditures of your hard-earned money. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. You went on my screen. You are now. Second question starts with Cheryl, and interestingly, you addressed it in your other answer, but we'll go with it and see where this goes. The town in recent years has made progress on several long-plan construction projects, new sidewalks, street improvements. Even the town hall is under construction after lots of debate. What are the town's top infrastructure needs and how much can the town afford to do?
Thank you for the question. I think like Mike was saying, we need to be fiscally responsible and be very judicious with the money that we collect. I would like to see sidewalks become a priority. Living in the downtown area, I see many families walking and riding bikes and enjoying downtown. However, they don't have a safe place to do it. And if two cars are coming, the ditch is the only place to go. We started this with the, you know, the main drag and we got most of the way done. I would, I know there's a second set of plans in place and getting ready to be done. I know there's talk about Loudoun Street getting finished and they came through with VDOT and dug some trenches and got some of the flooding issues done. But there's still a lot of safety issues there. So I think that's a priority. Just to allow businesses to thrive and connect the new part of town with the old part of town.
Joy?
I think the town has a lot of needs and wants. I think first off, we have to make tough decisions to decide what are actual needs and what are things that are just wants. One of my passions is the water and water rates is one thing, but keeping up with the water is important. Making sure that the water is reliable and the pipes are taken care of. I know there are some older sections that are needing to be replaced. I think that's important. How we afford that? Because it's a need, I think that's something that would have to be worked into the budget in any way, shape, or form because it's a need and a need is different than a want. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Buck?
Thank you. Well, the first thing I did after I heard the question is I pulled up our CIP. This is our capital improvement plan. This is what the planning commission and the town council has prioritized as important infrastructure or future spending projects. And these are things that I voted on this last year. There are some things on here that are good progress. We're making progress at Broadway, the second phase of Broadway and getting ready to start on Church Street and Pennsylvania Avenue. The other, the other things on there you can find on our Lovitzville website. Check it out. The one thing I want to add, though, is that recently, only very recently, we've made Loudoun Street a priority as far as addressing the problems that we have on South Loudoun. I've always felt, even when I was a planning commissioner, that it is egregious that we don't have a sidewalk going to our school. I know this is a big point of contention for many people in town. But the truth is, a while back, the planning commission and eventually the town council, they prioritized Broadway as first to get the sidewalks, so to say. That was our main street, main street in town. One more second. And then the only thing I would add to that is I think that South Loudoun has become such a throughway and it's become such a highly traveled road that maybe the priorities should be readdressed and put it higher on the CIP. Thank you.
Okay, Ken?
I hate to parrot what everybody else is saying, but you know, I agree that we need to improve the sidewalks in town. We need to improve the drainage in town. Water bills, I hear a lot of complaints about it. My boat doesn't seem to be so terrible, but, but it's something that we need to look at to see if we can keep costs under control while ensuring that we can keep the maintenance going and everything. One thing that I'd also like to see us focus on at some point is to bring high-speed internet to a larger portion of the area. I know that with everybody telecommuting now because of being home with the quarantines, there's a lot of people in town that just don't have the bandwidth that they need for work. That's something I'd like to.
Okay, Mike?
Thank you. You know, for decades, our streets have really languished with few improvements. Stormwater continues to flood sections of our town and, you know, our children cannot walk safely to the elementary school. We can do better. And I've worked with our staff, agencies, elected officials, and private industry to find solutions to our infrastructure challenges. Whenever possible, we need to seek no-cost solutions, such as when I reached out to VDOT and our sheriff's department to solve a dangerous crossing in the middle of town. I've also fought for funding in the budget to respond to concerns in Lakeview Village on Park Place, arguing that the town not only has a right but an obligation to help our residents who have neither the resources or authority to unilaterally solve water drainage issues. Other solutions are not going to be that easy. South Loudoun's been waiting for safe pedestrian access since automobiles began using it as a cut-through decades ago. I moved it up on the CIP plan, worked with my colleagues to move that project to the forefront rather than five, 10, or 15 years from now. Our residents can't afford these projects out of their pockets, and that's why I will continue pressing our mayor and my colleagues to seek outside sources of funding rather than expecting our residents to put the bill from our scarce resources.
Okay, Dave?
Thank you for the question. I agree with a lot of you. Hate to say it, but I do. Especially Loudoun Street, that does need to be addressed. It's good that it's getting pushed up front, and we do need to research ways of funding that project instead of taking it out of our citizens' pockets. One thing I would like to add is, is the town hall expansion. A lot of people didn't, didn't like that idea, but especially with the timing. But we didn't have any choice in the timing. A decision had to be made to do something with it. And the two choices were, one, we could replace the trailer, which is severely outdated. They won't maintain it. There's a danger of the roof collapsing if we get too much snow. That would cost, including the first year's rent, $100,000, and then $20,000 the following year, and we were promised the rent would go up after that. That for not even resolving the issue for what the town hall needs as far as space. That to me, frankly, is just throwing money to the trash can. We are on our way to doing a permanent solution to this, even though it is going to take a little bit out of the, out of the reserve. But it will be a permanent solution and that'll fix everything. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, starting with Joy, is in every election, we hear about the importance of protecting Lovitzville's small-town feel. Recently, town leaders were faced with another proposal for the Ingle Track, and there remains the possibility for annexations of people to, mayors outside town to ask for annexation. What are your goals for the future development in town? Starting with Joy.
In general, I don't support any kind of unplanned growth. There are some sections of town that are not developed yet, and I know that the zoning is already pre-planned for those areas. So there is some more growth that is planned. The Ingle Track is planned for light industrial. I think that we need to follow that plan with light industrial. Putting homes in that area is not appropriate for a lot of different reasons. Number one is the traffic. To put homes in that area would bring traffic to the area that's, these roads in our area can't support. As we've been talking about, the roads in our area already have some issues that need to be dealt with. As a teacher, bringing more houses that we can hold, that we can support, is not good for our town. Overcrowded schools is not okay. It lowers the education for a lot of students. And Lovitzville Elementary School is almost at its maximum. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but more than, you know, 100 houses in an area would put them over the top, which would make a lot of our, our kids not have a good education.
Okay, Buck.
Thank you. This small town feel that we all talked about and that we all embrace has actually been captured quite nicely in our comprehensive plan. The most recent version, I helped draft while I was on the planning commission. And we focused on what we think that people envision Lovitzville to be in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. We've planned our growth through the comprehensive plan. Joy touched on the angle track and that's true. It was zoned for light industrial and if someone wants to build homes there, they're going to have to change the zoning and change our comprehensive plan. There is infield development. In other words, houses still to be developed here in town. But in addition to rooftops, I think we also have to think about our commercial and our light industrial, if we can ever find some. And manage the way we just throw in a strip mall here or commercial stores there. It is a small town feel, but we want to, we don't want to just plaster. I won't use any specific store names. I don't want to put anybody on the block. Also, the events is something that I think we need to maintain and and even expand responsibly, especially when it's paying for itself. Thank you.
Ken.
Thanks, Norman. And I apologize. I had been referring to you as Patrick. Got my name a little messed up there, so. You know, I moved into Lovitzville 20 odd years ago, when the Milhoven subdivision was still considered the new project, even though it had already been 20 years old. Since then, the growth in Lovitzville has just blown up and the number of homes seem to be out of control. My understanding is that as the town put together a plan to have really sustained growth to balance between residential and industrial and other commercial businesses. And having unplanned growth is, is, is not going to be as sustainable. I agree with Joy that adding the additional houses to, to the town, overburden our roads, overburden our schools. We have a pan plan in place. It's something that I'd like to take a look closer at so that I have a better understanding of it. But I, I think. I think that's our best course of action for now.
Mike.
Well, thank you. You know, one of the challenges with aggressive development proposals is that they really threaten our small town. They bring unsolved transportation challenges, unfunded infrastructure costs and erosion of that small town community culture. I think courting the appropriate type and kind of commercial development remains one of our biggest challenges and also one of our biggest opportunities. Lovitzville has a tremendous potential to both thrive and retain that small town community we all love without giving into developers looking for that quick profit. I don't support annexing residential development into town, although I think there may be some opportunities for commercial businesses who'd like to join the town limits. But we do know that from public meetings, there was commercial interest in the 35 acre track that we have already zoned for commercial. And we need to develop our infrastructure in such a way that it attracts the right kind of commercial investments, which will broaden our tax base and provide services to our community. I think part of that is both on the, the street, skates and sidewalks and the other infrastructure, but also looking for ways to attract more reliable broadband access to our town that businesses can use. Thank you.
David.
Thank you for the question. Small town feel. When I first came to Lovitzville, I pulled in Loudoun Street, went by the elementary school and headed up to where Chuck's Pizza used to be. And I couldn't help but to feel I was rolling into a scene of one flew over the cuckoo's nest. Okay? Just love, fell in love with this town. Everybody's just charming here. What I don't want to see is any, any zoning changes that will enable more residential growth. We're okay where we're at. We don't need to add any more to it. There's still going to be roofs going up. There'll still be revenue there and the, the angle track, light industrial, that, that is good for what it is. We just have to attract the right people to come in there. And that needs to be taken a look at as well. Hasn't been working so far, but we need to look diligently at how we can do that. Thank you. Good question.
Okay, Cheryl, you're up.
Hi, thanks for the question. I think when it comes to the angle tract and the small town feel, public sentiment was very, very clear. That people did not want a housing development there. I don't think there was a whole lot of argument in that decision. I fell in love with Lovitzville because it's a small town, because I wanted to raise my children where they could walk down the street to go see their friends and I didn't have to worry. And that, you know, Ms. Sue, if she was at the fair, could text me and say, hey, I just saw your son on the Tilt-A-Whirl and I could say, excellent. Those are the kind of things that I want to remain. And I am not for any more housing going in. I am for courting the businesses that we want to see serve our residents here. I think the angle tract gives us opportunity. So far, nobody's come seeking it. However, I think we can go out and try to find the right person for that particular spot.
All right, move on to the next question, starting with Buck. In recent years, some of the base concern, some town leaders have raised concern that the towns become, our town leaders have become increasingly partisan. I think the recent, you know, second amendment issue, as an example of that. Do you feel that's happening? Is the town becoming more partisan or the town council becoming more partisan? And how would you go about working with your fellow council members to ensure that the town's business gets done? Buck.
Thanks for that question. I think there's a misconception here that, that there's some kind of partisan divide amongst, in town. I, I don't think the divide is partisan and frankly, I've been out in town before I wasn't allowed to go out in town. And I don't see the divide out there. I do see a division in the town council. I see an inability for some people to work with each member and to work as a team. The, the partisan nature of the second amendment day aside, I don't think the divide is partisan. Because I, I think that people that would traditionally support conservative or liberal causes are, are, are still talking to each other. They're still, they're still listening to each other. I think that there's just become a, a problem on the council of everyone wanting to work together. Also, I, I think the, the, the division that you speak of is, I'll even say solely propagated on Facebook. And, and I, I don't think everyone realizes that a very small minority of people in town spend their days posting on Facebook, reading messages and getting very upset about what's going on there. I think if you get out in town, walk around and talk to people, it's not Facebook and I don't think it's that bad. Thank you.
Okay, Ken.
It would be nice to go out in town and walk around and talk to people. Unfortunately, I don't have that up. I I would have to say, I, I disagree. You know, when we see that things are only happening on Facebook, Facebook is an extension of our society. And some of the, the conversations that have occurred on Facebook show an underbelly of what's going on in the town, unfortunately. And it is very partisan, in my opinion. That said, I do agree that we're seeing that spill over into the town council and we need people on the town council that can leave their personal politics behind them and, and take a step forward and volunteer their time to work for the town without making it a political issue. I believe that I can do that. I have my own opinions, but they're, you know, my opinions are one of over 2,000 voices. I'm not looking to bring my voice specifically to the town council, but to bring ideas from, from other people. You know, we can, we can work through this. Lovitzville is a great town, great people. And I think that we're just going through a tough spot with disagreements and we need to be a little bit more open to the fact that differing opinions exist.
Mike.
Well, thank you. It's a great question. You know, I don't believe that partisanship belongs in our local elections. You know, I work at every turn to seek solutions, which bring our community together instead of introducing initiatives with, which only serve to divide our town. You know, and the proof is in the tremendous outpouring of support I've received from all those I know who fall on a wide range of political viewpoints, but agree that national politics don't belong in our town council. I was asked to apply for an appointment in later run precisely because I fight for due process, rule of law and protection of individual rights, even when it would be politically expedient not to. I have and will continue to put our community, our families and our town ahead of personality differences, politics and self-interest. I'm an unwavering supporter of all our constitutional rights, not only as a councilman, but also as an able officer. I felt it was in poor form for the council to bring forward national social issues to the dais. But my assumption was not out of lack of support for the second amendment, was that a lack of support for the second, but rejection rather of improperly and poorly written proclamation that was off message. Working together no matter how far apart we begin in our ideas, you know, we can draft policies which are right for Lovitzville and our families.
David.
Thank you for the question. Yes, if you look at Facebook, there, it, it's nothing but partisan. It's to me, it's a social distancing platform and there's a lot of cowardice comments made on it. So you got people who are passionate about what they believe and the volume gets turned up and then the smearing begins. That's just, and that's been going on for years and years and years and years. It's unfortunate. It's happening in this awesome little town we got. Going forward, I do believe there is a division within the town council. Whether that created this or not, that remains to be seen. But what I would bring to the table, if elected, is that I will collaborate and work with all the others with whatever the issues are and try to get them done as economically and as efficiently as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you for the question. I am all for working together. I think that, you know, personality differences, national politics, those are things that shouldn't really matter when you're up on that dais. We are there to discuss things that affect all of us as members of this town. We are not there to win a popularity contest or to be a Republican or a Democrat or an independent or anything else you want to choose. We are really there to represent the members of this diverse town. And my personal views, like Ken said, are aside. At that point, I am there to represent the town. We can do this best by focusing on what the town has the legal authority to work on. I, like Mike, disagreed with the two A amendment clause because of the fact that the town can't legislate on guns. That's state and local or state and federal, I'm sorry. And I really would like to see us not focus on things that are divisive.
Joy.
I don't think the town is partisan. I think that there are some hot topics that people are going to stand strong on one side or on the opposite side. And one of them is the second amendment ideas. I think that was one really hot topic that stirred up a lot of emotions. And I was at that meeting. I saw how strongly people felt for that and I did speak at that meeting. I don't think that that means that our town is divided or that we weren't able to find middle ground or that the town council wasn't able to do their job. I think if I was on the town council, I think that's a job and that's something that you put your personal views aside and you do what's best for the town. Some of your opinions will come into play for that. But again, it is doing what's best for the town that you think is best.
Thank you. We move on to another question and we'll start with Ken on this one. Work has stalled on the construction of the community center project. And that's revived talks about whether that building should be saved or preserved. What are your views on that project in, in broad, more broadly? What are your views of the relation between the town, the Lovitzville Town Council and the county government? Is that, is that working well?
Thanks, Norman. I hate to show my ignorance. I, I don't know enough about the project. I, I do know that that the new community center plans were started. I don't know what was behind the stalling. I'd love to see it completed based on a personal desire. I don't know the finances behind it. It's something that unfortunately I just never had a chance to look into because of, of my work schedule. As far as the relationship with, with the county, to my understanding, the town has a very good relationship. I, I, I think that we owe that to the mayor and town council members and, and the previous mayor as well. I'd love, love to see that continued. It's something that I'd be interested in taking part of.
Okay, Mike.
Well, thank, you know, it's a, it's a great question. You know, I think it's unfortunate that the amount of time and effort that went into putting together a plan and spending money on a new town hall didn't go into solving some of these other questions. I think the town can work really closely and work really well with the county when it chooses to. And unfortunately, I think we've got a little bit of a spotty record on that and I hope to help turn that around. I think one of the challenges that we have and we've talked about it before is we need to bring those outside resources to bear on these infrastructure issues that we have. And that starts with the county, not only getting their support, but also seeking funds and being placed on their own capital improvement plan. That only happens when we go to the county, we have the leadership of the town doing that and it just hasn't been done in recent years. So I look forward to working more closely with the county, make sure we're solving our issues with the water tower, South Loudoun Street projects and other infrastructure needs that we have here in Lovitzville.
Okay, David.
Thank you for the question. I agree with Mike. We do need to strengthen our relationship with the county on a few issues. What I do know about that, that park is, is that the first construction company was kicked out because they weren't able to perform to the task. They rebid at the second and third phase, which are going to be a little bit more expensive than the original second and third phase and go forward with it. The original building does have historical value. I would like to see that intact. With that, other thing I bring to the table is saving the town money on this very thing. My, my experience in the construction industry, I, I, I have enough influence to be able to create some oversight to make sure things are properly done the first time. Then when the Broadway, for example, they ended up spending another 30,000 because it wasn't milled right the first time. And then they lost another 30,000 because it went into a different budget and subsequently had to stop short on it. Thank you for the question. I know I'm over.
Cheryl.
Sometimes a minute is not enough. On the community center, I think we have a good working relationship with the county. I would like to see us continue to have input and some oversight into what's going on there, since it's going to be our town that utilizes it probably the most of all. And although the old building has some historical value to it, it doesn't meet the ADA regulations. And so balancing those two things out, I think that's something that has to be taken into consideration because we do want everybody to be able to utilize the accommodations that are there.
Joy.
I think communication between the town and the county is very important. With the various areas in town that we do need to speak with the county about. The community center is one of them. Both my, my daughters went through the community center. It's very big for our town. It's important that it's planned out and gets done. I know that there's a lot of frustration because it's not getting done. And I think that we could do a better job of working with the county to make sure that there are no setbacks in any kind of construction projects. And I think communication is key so that they can talk to us and that we can talk to them. They have somebody to go to within the town that they know that they can communicate with and work together with.
Buck? Thank you. There has been a lot of communication back and forth between the county and the town. I think we're keeping tabs on what's going on over there. But a lot of it is, is, is above our pay grade, so to say, or out of our hands. But I look forward to keeping pressure on the county so that we can get that project completed. And we need some more ball fields in town to encourage more Little League play up here in town. Also, the, the relationship with the county, that includes our sheriff's department as well. And we need to do a better job or we need to work on that relationship, the sheriff's department, to better enforce the laws of the county here in town. Thank you.
All right, we've got time for one more and then we'll go into some closing comments. So we'll start with Mike on this. And we've had a couple of Facebook inquiries about along these lines, but the virus outbreak has had a devastating impact, economic impact. What steps should the town take to aid businesses and residents who have been hit hard during the shutdown? And is the town's reserves, is the town operations, are they buffer enough to withstand this?
Yeah, it's a great question. I'm sorry. It's a great question. I appreciate the outreach on this because I think it affects every one of our residents and small businesses here in town. I put forth a couple of proposals and the council has been working on several. And one of those was to make sure that we're not charging people for water that they were prohibited from a, from the government by, by government order to use. School's still out on whether it's going to be a simple motion or we have to make a change for our town code. But I, I think that we need to make sure that we have the resources in place and either lower, lower the tax burden that we have on our small businesses and our residents and not take those taxes in the first place or find a way to relieve that burden in the future. And so I think we do have some resources, but overall our, our reserves were depleted when we, when the town hall was approved and obligated five hundred forty thousand dollars. And the remaining funds that are in reserves are generally obligated either for projects already in the pipeline or for minimum reserves that we can't touch without further action. So we don't have a lot of reserve and that makes it even more important to use our scarce resources more carefully.
Okay, David?
Thank you for the question. I agree. There are, well, for one thing, we gotta step back a little bit because we don't know what the ballgame looks like yet. We gotta let the chips fall a little bit more to see where we're at before we make any rash decisions or any decisions on how to go forward to stimulate our businesses and help our citizens. And I'll tell you, with the small town feel, if you look at how many people live in this town, how many people out of that have been reaching out, helping one another, making masks, taking people to the doctors, doing all these things, shopping for people who have compromised immune systems, everything. Even, I went into Andy's a couple of days ago. They only had a small stack of tickets, maybe a dozen. And I guarantee you, there was every bit of a hundred dollars in that tip jar. There are a lot of people helping a lot of people here. We won't know what exactly to do until the chips have fallen and then we can go ahead and act whatever kind of relief is necessary. Thank you.
All right, Cheryl?
Because as Mike was saying, our town reserve resources are small. We can't go and send out large stimulus coupons to every town resident. We just don't have the funds for that. However, I do think we can work with the Loudon Economic Development Committee, other people that are out there giving grants and, and looking for ways to help small businesses. We could develop a task force to say, reach out to all the local business owners and say, all right, we're gonna help you apply for these grants and make sure that you get your chance. Loudon Economic Development Commission had so many respondees. It's six hundred in the first hour. So they're doing a drawing because everybody needs that help. And I was amazed by the level of response from that. I think, like David was saying, if you put out a call in this town and say, hey, I need toilet paper, I've seen people, you know, show up with rolls and rolls. And our household calls it the gold of, you know, the roll of gold because it's a hard thing to find. But when people need it, darn, if everybody doesn't show up and help one another. And I think that's a great thing about Lovettsville.
Joy?
I agree. It is great seeing people helping others at this great unusual time that we're going through right now. Because we're not quite sure the future, I think right now what we can do to help local businesses is to just suspend any kind of fees that they're, they're charged because they're not bringing any money. They shouldn't be charged any fees because they don't have the money to pay for it. In the future, we don't know exactly how this is going to end or when it's going to end or when normal will ever be back. And I think at that point, we will have to sit down and make some tough decisions and see how we can help businesses. One of those ways is just simple advertising, how we can help bring people to the town to make use of the businesses that we have here so that we can bring back some, some money for them.
Buck?
Thank you. I'm not sure if I misunderstood Mr. Dunlop or not. But we've been working very hard on, on relief for businesses here in town. Specifically, we were trying to relieve them of their, of their minimum water payment if they've been closed down. It was a fantastic idea. We're currently dealing with some legal interpretation from the town's lawyer. Because it's, it's been interpreted that if we help one group, then we have to help all of the groups. That includes all the citizens. So it's been, it's been hard work. Government's not supposed to just snap out new, new rules and new legislation. We have to make sure we get it right. And that's what we're working on. We're doing the job. Also, the, all of this talk about depleted reserves, small reserves, no reserves. Last year, we had a, we had our annual retreat and we worked with professional, professional municipal finance people that came in and we had a simplified utility and general fund reserve system. They now both prioritize delivery of core services and operations over new spending. We've done a great job of hitting the targets that we've established. I read from my notes, even with our approved projects, I'm talking about the town hall. We're still on track to exceed those targets by a half million dollars and almost thirty percent of where experts say we need to be. That's not depleted reserves. That's not a small amount of reserves. Our general fund is fully, reserve fund is fully funded. Thank you.
Ken, there you go.
Thanks, Norman. It's a tough question. We are in uncharted territory here. You know, to say though, that, that we have to sit back and see where the chips fall. Now, I'm blessed, as I'm sure many of you are, that, that, you know, I still have a job. We can't say that for all the residents in Lovettsville. We can't say that for all the employers in Lovettsville. So I don't think that we can really wait what action to take specifically. I don't know. I think that we, there's some great ideas that came across from all the other candidates and they're all worthy of exploration. I know that the town council, in addition to talking about waiving the minimum water fee, that they were talking about crediting for the meals tax for restaurants to assist them or, or the sales tax for, for other businesses. I don't know what the end result was. I, I think these are all great ideas. I think that they just, they need to be fleshed out. I just don't think that we have a lot of time to decide while somebody is sitting at home without a check. It's something that we need to act on soon.
All right, we've reached the end of the hour pretty quickly, as always. I wish we were sitting in the room together as we normally do for these things. You all have run a campaign in the most interesting of times and challenging of times. And I think we all hope that this year we have a record turnout in the Lovettsville elections. And we hope that most of those are by absentee ballot. So whatever we can do to help with that, we're here to do. We're going to aim with some closing comments. And, and one thing I heard, two minutes each, starting with Dave. And we heard a lot of agreement tonight. A lot of people agree with the direction the town's going and where, and what priorities are. So as we leave tonight, tell us why you, what, what do you bring special to the table to town council chambers that maybe set you apart from some of the other folks on the ballot? So thank you all very much. And Dave, go ahead.
Thank you, Norman. Okay. As I said before, I got twenty five years in the construction industry, mostly road construction and trucking. When Bambi and I got married and moved into here at the Lakeview Village HOA, we looked for a church and settled on Mount Olivet. Since then, I've become quite active in the community. We, I either in part or in whole facilitated sponsoring all the children games for the Mayfest. And we participated in a lot of the Oktoberfest, got to meet a lot of nice people. What I bring to the table, more so than any other candidate, is the experience of getting things done more efficiently on the construction end of things. Maybe combining a couple of projects, saving on some engineering fees. Instead of paying fifty thousand dollars for one, twenty thousand on the other, there are times where we can't do that. But I do believe there are times where we can, instead of spending seventy thousand for both, combine them and we can whittle it down to like fifty, fifty-five thousand. I'm totally confident that can happen. Also, collaboration and transparency. If I'm elected, I will work together with every other council member, the town staff. Before I was elected to the HOA board, I was in and out of that door so many times. It was almost like on a spinning wheel in the town hall. Talking with Josh, Greg Tac, Mr. Ritter about the grant going on for the infrastructure improvement here at the Lakeview Village. And Josh, if you're listening, thank you so much for the time you put in this and everybody at the town hall. I know you spent a lot of money and a lot of time doing it. With that, I can bring the same expertise to the town council and work on it at that level. This is my opportunity to serve you. I implore you to get on the town website, familiar, familiarize yourself with, with the webpage. You'll be able to find out anything you want. Thank you for your time and I do hope you vote for me, David Earl. Thank you.
All right, Cheryl?
Thank you, everybody. I kind of think it's wonderful that we all agree so much. It's, it's refreshing to hear a political, political debate where people aren't yelling at each other. I think even if we did disagree, that holding each other and respecting one another's opinions, holding them high is important. I have spent years and years working in many different industries with people of all stripes, creeds, colors. I always put other people first. And I think other people's opinions matter. And not to say that my, my fellow candidates don't. But I think that is something that is incredibly important to me, that everybody gets a voice and is represented. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joy.
I feel that I can benefit the town in a couple of ways. Number one, my math background. I think a lot of people do have math backgrounds, but my background is a little bit different. And I feel like I can look at the budget and any of the numbers that are in the town and look at it in a different way to try to benefit us and to cut the budget, to be responsible with our spending, to be transparent with communication, and also limit the unplanned growth. I've advocated against water rates back from when I first moved in back in two thousand twelve. I talked to the town council and spoken several times about water rate increases. I still feel that way. And I think that it is important that we keep the water rates intact as low as possible. As I mentioned earlier, I did speak at the Second Amendment proclamation. That's very important because as of July first, the state of Virginia has allowed local towns like ours to make areas gun-free zones. And because of my stand, I believe that we need no further gun restrictions in our town. And I think that's important in the coming months. I also represent the northern section of Lovettsville. I think that's important because we don't have anybody on the town council that's in Kingsbridge or Newtown Meadows. And it is a different area of town that I think really does need to be represented. I am dedicated to serve as I do as a teacher and in any of my jobs that I've ever had. I think it's important to be dedicated and honest. And that's what I also bring to the table. So I do look forward to serving the town of Lovettsville and thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Buck, you're up next.
Thank you, Norm. And thank you, Joy. That's interesting. I guess it does make it a small town issue. Folks, I'm the only one here that has consistently reached out and worked with each person on the town council for all of the issues and all of our plans. I'd like to continue to work on the town council for you. We've accomplished some wonderful things over the last year. One of them is the transportation master plan. We've approved that. I'd like to see it come, come to fruition. A project that is not complete yet is our town's finance committee. It's something that I've introduced, something we began work on before this virus took hold. And it's something that I would like to continue. And we're actually searching for volunteers right now who would like to serve on this committee with a financial background. My experience, I think I have the most experience out of all the candidates, actually, between my plan, planning commission service and now my town council service. But I don't have any future political ambitions. This is it for me. I'm not tied to any partisan organizations and I will continue to work for Lovettsville in the best interest of Lovettsville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken, you're up.
Norman, it seems that even though we're all trying to show our unique qualities, we all sound the same again. Like everyone else, I, I have a commitment to work for the town. I have no political ambitions. I'm not doing this for myself in any way. I feel an obligation to, to provide my time now that I have some free time in my schedule to the town and not expect the same people to keep stepping up and, and taking time away from their families. That end, you know, I'm a hard worker. I'm sure everyone else here is. I truly do care about the town as I'm sure everyone else does. So I don't know what unique skills we all believe that we have. I think that they'll have the same goal in mind and that is to do the best that we can for the town. What I won't bring to the town is some of the divisiveness that we've seen on the town council. I, I won't bring my own politics and I intend to leave my, my, my personal beliefs at the door when I walk in. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. And we won't forget Mike this time.
Thank you. You know, tonight we've heard from folks on a variety of issues and from the questions, it's clear that they care deeply about their leaders and how we conduct the town's business. Leadership and governance is about more than an aw shucks grin and shaking a few hands. Our residents expect us to conduct the business of the town professionally, adhering to good process and sound policy and rejecting that which fails to meet these standards. We cannot allow extremism, cult of personality and attacks from outside of our town to hijack our community. We must remain focused on building our community together. I will do so and refuse to waste your hard earned dollars on frivolous projects. Water and sewer costs remain our biggest challenge. I have worked hard with our staff to prevent rate increases. However, we do need a new elevated water tank for capacity fire suppression. Our pipes are aging, wastewater solid management costs are looming. And Lovettsville will require investments through county, state and federal resources to meet those acute needs for water and sewer system. As ever stringent state and federal environmental guidelines and requirements raise the cost of operating system. Pedestrian network in Lovettsville remains incomplete, preventing safe, walkable access for our families to our schools, businesses, library, community centers and parks. Flooding also remains a key issue causing damage to roadways and homes throughout the older parts of town. Long stalled roads, sidewalk and storm management projects need to be funded in the near term to attract businesses, create a safe community and support our property values. Your aggressive development proposals threaten our small town. They bring unsolved transportation challenges, unfunded infrastructure costs and erosion of the small town community that we talked about earlier. According to appropriate type and kind of commercial development remains one of our biggest challenges and opportunities. Lovettsville has tremendous potential to both thrive and retain the small town community we all love without giving in. without giving in to developers looking for that quick profit. To achieve these goals, our nonpartisan town council must return to committee and reject cults of personality. Working together, no matter how far apart our ideas begin, we can craft the policies which are right for Lovetille, our families and our community. I appreciate the work Loudon now put into making this possible and thanks to all of our residents who were able to join us this evening.
Thank you all very much for joining us tonight and helping us put this on. It appears it all worked, so somebody may see this. We will see you at the polls on May 19th or June 4th. We'll see how that goes. And remember the deadline for absentee ballots to request absentee ballot is May the 12th. So that's important this year. Congratulations to all of you, thank you for your willingness to serve and we'll see you on election day.